All right. We'll call the meeting to order on the September 1st, 2020, planning and zoning. Seated tonight are the five regular members, myself, David Rathman, Fred Dykman, Ben Filbert, Gardner Young, and Lynn Conway. Also present is Ryan Beasley. Keith, you're up.
Sure, it looks like up first are the minutes of the August 11th meeting. And actually, before that, if I can just do the housekeeping thing of reminding people to please mute themselves, please mute yourselves when you're not talking, whether you're on a regular telephone or you're on a computer, so that way we won't hear crazy feedback throughout the meeting. And please try to remember to say your name before you're speaking.
Keith, Keith, can I interrupt for one second? I'm sorry, this is Chuck D. I am on via phone. I'm going to mute myself now, I realize I'm not seated, but I am present by phone. I couldn't, the meeting link wouldn't work for me.
All right, so first up are the draft minutes of the August 11th meeting.
Motion to approve the meetings.
Do I hear a second?
This is Ben, I second them.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now, Keith.
Sure, item 4D, administrative review items. 4D1 is Attorney Ted Ladwig's request for interpretation of Section 7.1.1, accessory dwelling units, specifically structure, total area versus gross floor area. This issue was discussed by the commission at the last meeting. And we went back and forth about how to interpret that regulation and decided to ask the town attorney for his opinion. I also gave the commission a separate summary of related purposes in the zoning regulations, how often they pick them up. So we did get the town attorney opinion that I sent out separately. What he says is, basically, it's the commission's call to interpret the regulations, but he thinks that it's more likely that if this went to court, a judge would agree with Mr. Ladwig's interpretation. That it's not really ambiguity there. People can remember to mute their microphones.
Okay, hold it. Keith, we're getting awful echo. Someone is not on mute. We got a dog. Who's dog's barking? Okay, go ahead, Keith.
So yeah, he, the town attorney, seemed to agree more with Mr. Ladwig's take on it, that there's not much of a case for ambiguity there for the commission to interpret, that we might be stuck with looking at it as just total area, as that regulation says, and not using the gross floor area definition. Meaning that the homeowner could count their basement to get over 2,000 square feet in their house, and would be eligible for an accessory dwelling unit. Town attorney also gave us a separate letter that's just talking about different ways that the town could amend its regulations to be more clear. It seems like the best way to do that would just be to go in and add the term gross floor area, where we wanted to say gross floor area. So it looks like whilst the commission's interpretation, town attorney felt that, you know, this homeowner should be allowed to have their accessory dwelling unit based on that.
What's the feeling of the commission on this? Are you talking, Gardner?
Fred, I think we were trying to talk, you're on mute.
Gardner, you're on mute. Did you have something to say? You're still on mute.
Okay. I can hear.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. Fred Dykman, two questions. One is, how quickly can we change these regulations to close this loophole and others like it? The second is, does not years of interpreting this regulation in one way count for anything here? I think it's absurd that we're stuck in this situation, and I hope everybody realizes that every small ranch house in this town is now twice as big as it used to be for this, and all those small mail houses that are all over town are now half again as big as they used to be for this purpose. I think that we really need to cut this off as quickly as we can. If we can't do it quickly, then I'd say that we're going to have to go to court.
Yeah, and I think that would be the intention, is to quickly put in a regulation amendment to clean this up, really clean it up all over the zoning regulations, because there are dozens of places where this is the case. It's not just the accessory dwelling.
September 15th meeting, maybe?
I think so. It's not going to be submitted in October, but it wouldn't be bad.
We got a problem. Someone's got an open mic. Okay, Lynn.
No, I agree with part of what Fred, I think this language that was proposed was not appropriately reserved for the zoning regs for clarity. However, I disagree with the town attorney. I do not think that, you know, we should be pressed to allow this to go forward at all. I think that we should, Sean, it's the spirit of the regulation, which this is not meant to be, and, you know, I do think that we should add clarity as quickly as we can, and I do think that at the time that we add clarity to this language, the committee may want to take a step back, and we had another first applicant come forward a few months ago, where they were looking to build a garage unit and then turn around and turn it into an accessory building, because they didn't meet, you know, the letter of what the regulation was saying. So they found a loophole in the regulation, and that, again, was not the spirit of this regulation. It wasn't that you could build a garage and then all of a sudden it's a garage and you can turn it into an accessory building. So I do think that the commission should look at that, and additional language changes to be proposed at the time, the language change for the floor area ratio is clarified. I don't think it, I just think there needs to be clarification. And I think even just putting a parenz in there, saying for floor area ratio would make, would serve the purpose of clarifying the language. But I do not think we should allow this to go forward for this application.
I think we can clarify both things in our new amendment, if we can do it next time, include that in the amendment, that they can't build a garage and then add the apartment. Maybe we should put that they have to have, it should be there 15 years or something on property before they do it. Keith, you think we can add both of them?
We could do something, we could do something like that. I mean, fixing that is an awkward proposition. There's not a great solution to it, it would have to be some sort of time-based thing like that, if that's what the commission wants to do.
Keith, and as I read the, as I read the lawyer's letter, all we really need to do is redefine gross floor area ratio to include all of these haphazard expressions of area that are in the regulation, where it's appropriate, of course, but we don't have to go much further than making sure that the term gross floor area ratio includes these other terms, so that we're not caught in this bind again.
In definition, in our definition.
Yes. Yeah, that's what, that's what the letter from, uh, Landrigan said, or suggested.
Yeah, I totally agree with that, Fred. That should not be a hard or difficult change to make. But I do think we need to have something in the regulation, again, a clarification to restore that there's no ambiguity around the spirit of the regulation, and that is that, you know, you don't fill the garage until a year later, say, you know, now it's an ancillary dwelling. So we do need to have a, you know, a time put in there for that as well, because it's a loophole, and it was not, it was not meant to be that way when the regulation was forward.
This is Ben. I don't understand the time reference at all. What does it make if this house is built yesterday or 100 years ago?
Because the regulation wasn't intended to allow people who already had a garage in front of their house to add an apartment there. It wasn't the intention to build a brand-new, build a brand-new one from scratch, though. So the regulation has to better clarify that.
It wants some pre-existing buildings, not, I just don't understand why we put a time, 15 years. I mean, we initially started at 35 years, which seemed quite arbitrary, and we struck that, I believe.
Yeah, but Ben, people could fill the garage this week and next year put one with their apartment in it.
And I think that's what our friend is doing.
We don't want to prevent.
Okay, I think our friend in Old Mystic is doing just that.
I know he is.
Okay. So, we say five years?
You know what, Ben, I think saying something like 10 years is where, you know, that kind of, I think, would deter that type of activity. Because I don't think it's in, so yeah, I think 35 years was arbitrary in the original reg, and I think that, you know, we had modified that, but I don't think this is easy. Okay, yeah, I'm gonna build a new structure so that I can then turn around and make it into an ancillary building. You know, I think 10 years, circumstances can change, et cetera, that makes a lot of sense, but I honestly don't think that five years is long enough duration of time.
Yeah, we can add something like that to this. And as far as the town attorney's suggestion about just adding one sentence somewhere, saying that all these terms basically mean gross floor area, personally, I'd rather just say gross floor area, where we mean gross floor area, so someone picking up this book knows what we're talking about more, because otherwise, people will have to know to find this one sentence in the reg somewhere, and people won't notice that. So because I already did this whole memo that lists all these things out, it shouldn't be too, it shouldn't be too difficult.
So is the proposal, Keith, that you would go through every, everything that you have in your memo and change it to say gross floor area, and we could do that in one change? Is that what you're saying?
Right, right. Just changing those other related terms to gross floor area.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. I mean, that certainly makes sense, that, you know, to me, makes it simpler for somebody going through the reg, so they don't have to reference anything.
Yeah, that's what I think.
Yeah, I agree with that proposal.
Well, this is Ben. What about the basement and cellar debate? I got a little lost in that. 50% of them is cellar and above or below.
Well, the definition of gross floor area does not include a cellar, which is more than 50% below grade, but it does include what zoning calls a basement, which is more like a walkout basement. So that's sort of the gist of this whole argument with this particular house, is that because it doesn't say gross flare, floor area, it looks like they get to count the basement, the cellar.
But it, but it is, in this case, a cellar rather than a basement.
It is, yeah.
Yes.
And so what I'm saying about that is I don't agree with the attorney, and I think that the commission should say no, that was not how this was written, and thank you for, you know, letting us know that you misinterpreted it, and we'll help the public out in the future for that, that that's not how the reg was meant to be.
I guess, I think, I think we have to acknowledge that it is written poorly, all right? And what we're gonna hang our hat on here is 30 years of interpretation by the planning department to, if we choose to, to reject this, this application.
Anyhow, it does, it does, it does seem by changing the regulation, we're sort of admitting that it doesn't quite say gross floor area.
It doesn't say gross floor area.
You know, it's personally not risk, not worth the risk of appeal to court over this one apartment.
So what's the consensus of the commission, that we go ahead and have an amendment for next meeting if possible?
Oh, yes.
I have to say that I think the only reason that this commission would allow this to go forward is not because it's right, it's because you're afraid the town is going to get, at that particular, absolutely ridiculous. The entire commission understands that for 30 years, this has been four area ratio, there was absolutely nobody on the commission that said, oh no, that's not what it meant. And I just think that allowing this because you're afraid you're going to get sued is just, once again, you know, very poor, very poor on the town's part.
Mr. Chairman, may I be heard?
Yes, go right ahead, Ted.
I find myself in complete agreement with the town attorney. When he says in the third paragraph, the phrase total area, what does he say? And he's funny, he was about to say, Mr. Last, that the phrase total area is not ambiguous. If the commission meant gross floor area at any time, it up to, including 2018, December of 2018, it could have said gross floor area, and no one would have criticized the commission for it, but it continued to say total area, and total area is not an ambiguous term. In doing statutory construction, you have to use the ordinary meaning of the English language as written, not what, not what you, not what you thought, not that, this phrase, the spirit of the regulations drives me crazy, because there is no spirit of the regulations. It is the regulations as written that, you know, that the homeowners in Stonington are entitled to rely on, and that's what Tom Landrigan has found, that, you know, the fact that, you know, that you're afraid of being sued, I agree, you shouldn't be afraid to be sued, you should be afraid to be found to have, to interpret total area incorrectly for a very long period of time. That's what Tom Landrigan has, you know, has opined in his letter, in fact, in two letters. He followed up with a, with a letter dated yesterday, and he was referring to comments which I have not seen, I'm not privy to those comments, but he said, there's nothing in the comments, presumably that we've been doing this for 30 years, you know, and that should count for something, except that the phrase total area is not ambiguous. It's very simple, and that's what, that's what a judge is going to find, if, you know, the cause.
Ted, I think we're losing you.
Yeah.
Looks like a connection problem.
Well, okay, how do we proceed here? I have to admit that, as much as I hate to do so, that I think Ted Ladwig is right, and we are stuck with the words, if you're playing them pretty straightforward, and we need to fix it, you know, like the day after tomorrow. We need to get this done, because, because you're going to have a flurry of these applications for, for people who all of a sudden want to count their basement so that they can put a little apartment in their house. It's not, you know, we can't let it happen.
I agree. What's the consensus of the commission?
This is Ben. So again, I'm coming back to what the ADU said originally, and it only excluded, what was it, stairways and porches or decks or something? So are we including now the basement? Excluding, I should say, the basement for an ADU?
That's right.
I want to make it clear to me before I say, yes, it's.
We're excluding what are called sellers, not what are called basements.
Okay, perfect. Yes, I'm for fixing this up and bringing it as soon as we can.
Okay. Gardner? You agree?
Yes, yes, if you can for me.
Yes.
I got, I got disconnected, I don't know how. Am I back?
You are.
Am I back?
You're not, you're not working.
This is Lynn, to Ben's point, or, I mean, sorry, to Fred's point, do we have a very defined regulation on how you measure 50% of being above ground or basement versus a cellar? Have you looked into that, Keith? Is it very, very clear how you would measure that?
We'll look into it, if there is some sort of improvement that can be made quickly to that, then we will.
Yeah, I think it'd have to be a complete package.
Yeah, we'll see if there's anything that can clarify that.
Can we move forward more amended? As soon as possible.
We can do that, and there's also just the basic question of some sort of motion or at least a consensus to allow the zoning official to approve this zoning permit, based upon the town attorney's opinion.
Do I hear a motion on that?
I think I'm supposed to approve this permit as, as submitted, I guess, under protest.
Under protest. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, we'll move on to the next.
But this is Lynn, before we move on, I would like to say this to the commission. We have many text changes to our zoning reg. I often feel as if they're rushed. I often feel that the discussions are stilted, and I think this is a lesson learned for this commission, that whatever proposals are being made, you need to be really thoroughly watched through and researched from a language perspective, and I'm not sure the commission has done a good job of that in the last few years.
Agree.
I agree. We realize that, we've just done a couple things, one thing really.
Yeah, so maybe, maybe one of the things the commission should bring out is looking at some of the text changes that have been made over the last couple of years, and just doing a, a recheck on them, because I think they have been sloppy.
The commission, the changes over the past few years are nothing compared to the language in the zoning regulations since 1961, a lot of which is all over the place, and is very sloppy. So there's a lot of things to change in here. We've always wanted to do a big comprehensive change of the zoning regulations, but haven't really had the resources to do that. So yeah, lots of, lots of changes could be done here.
Well, this is probably not the time, but, but let's have a discussion offline, perhaps, about what it would take to get these regulations dressed up. You know, it's crazy, you know, to pile right amendment on top of amendment over the years and, and not be able to, and to have this kind of a situation, you know, bite you in the rear, because, because the language isn't right.
Yeah, and this, this term that we're talking about is a term that was just in there for, for decades, that wasn't changed when we redid it.
I understand, but, but let's talk about separately, not as a public meeting necessarily, about what we need to do to fix the regulations going forward.
Right.
If we can go to the town and see if we can get the resources to do it.
Yeah, and in the past, we have submitted requests for money to have a consultant come in, you know, who actually has the time to do this, and really address it from top to bottom, but, you know, we haven't had the funding to do that.
If we all get together and beat up the select women, we could, we should be able to do this.
For our finance, we gotta go.
Well, for the finance, let's go, let's go.
Because they have put it in numerous times, and the finance board knocks it down.
Well, this is Ben. I've never had many conversations with Jason Vincent on this very topic, and he was ballparking 100 to 150,000, I think, Keith, right, to do a top-to-bottom comprehensive change, but in the long run, that's cheaper than. than a couple of lawsuits.
Right.
I'm doing it for a hundred and twenty-five.
You know, any zoning regulations such that any change you make opens up all new sorts of problems. You know, regulations are sort of meant to be challenged and there's always people out there who are looking to, you know, question what they say because it is about what they say versus what you meant them to say. So even if the regulations are completely brand new and scrubbed by a team of attorneys, you would still have these questions about interpretations and things that don't necessarily mean what we think they mean. But, but definitely, you know, asking for the resources to do something like this would, would be a help.
I think one of our selectmen is listening on tonight, so maybe we'll see what they say.
So it is, hi, it's June. It is the Board of Finance that approves ultimately the budget, but the Board of Selectmen and specifically the first selectman does put forth the town's budget for approval by the Board of Finance. So you'll have our backing for this, for the new year coming up.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr.
Before you move on, I would like to thank the commission tonight for following the law. I know it was not what you would like, would have preferred, but I would like to thank you for following the law and making your decision on this issue tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ted.
And this is Ben. If I may, I'd like to thank Keith and his staff for doing a whole lot of homework to get us to this point as well.
He's got a lot of work in the next two weeks.
Well, next up, we have item four D two, PZ two oh oh two S D and Cam Michael Losia Junior, G Fettis, request ninety day extension for filing of final subdivision plans. This was a three lot subdivision approved by the commission on May twenty-sixth. The commission can grant up to two ninety day extensions on subdivisions. The governor's executive orders told the expiration of land use approvals anyway for a while during the state of emergency. And in general, they just have to follow up with, you know, filing the final plans and some of the legal documents and things like that. So there's really no reason not to grant the extension.
Make a motion to approve the extension.
Second motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Old business, Keith.
Old business, item six A, PZ two zero zero nine, Cam Mason's Island Company, Mason's Island Properties Association recommend tabling this. We've got an extension from the applicants. They're looking to put in a special use permit to go with this application. Item six B is PZ two oh one six SPA Stonington Country Club, site plan application for construction of a two-story sixty by twenty-four structure for use as a driving range, property located at three ninety-six Tagawak Road, Stonington Assessor's Map, sixty-nine block one lot three, zone GBR one thirty. I'm not sure if someone is out there to represent the applicant on this. Well, if not, this is a, an application for an accessory structure at Stonington Country Club. It's basically a structure that acts as a roof for the driving range where people can go under it, shoot the balls out if it's raining. The lower level, I don't want to call it basement or cellar in particular, doesn't matter with this application, will have virtual golf driving range, almost like, you know, video game simulations of driving ranges, forty, excuse me, about fourteen hundred forty square foot building. It conforms to the requirements of the GBR one thirty district. Let's see here. It basically looks like a, you know, three bay garage. It's very far from the street property lines. No bathrooms or water used proposed for the building. It's not within a hundred feet of any wetlands. The town engineer had some recommendations for it, just to demonstrate that roof leaders will deter water from being discharged toward the tennis courts. Just a note about not having hazardous materials there in the building. So that was the only recommended stipulation is just that final plan shall be reviewed to the satisfaction of the town engineer regarding his August twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty comments. But no real, no other issues with this application.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve the application with the stipulation that the engineer's requirements be met.
Do I hear a second?
This is Ben, the second time.
Any discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we are on to the public hearing.
Colleen wanted to talk. When did she want to talk tonight?
Oh, that was for the retaining wall regulation amendment.
That's okay.
We're also to move forward. Pursuant to the general statute to the state of Connecticut, revision of nineteen fifty-eight and all amendments thereto, in pursuant to the zoning regulations for the town of Stonington, Connecticut, the planning and zoning commission hereby gives notice that it will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September first, two thousand twenty, at seven PM by virtual meeting on the following applications. PZ two zero one three S D and G P P, Jane L. Howard, trustee J. P. Marine, re-subdivision and groundwater protection permit applications for a four lot open space development. Lots one and two are developed, lot three is undeveloped, and lot four is the proposed open space. Property located at one five two South Aguila Road, Parketuck, Assessor's Map three seven, block one, lot eight, zones R R eighty and GBR dash one three zero.
First, we'll hear from the applicant and all those in favor of the application. Then we'll hear from anyone opposed the application, and then we'll hear any general comments. And then the applicant has the right for rebuttal. Right now, is the applicant here?
Yes, sir. John Paul Marine.
Okay.
So basically, what we have here, gentlemen, is a thirteen plus acre parcel that had two buildings, or two dwellings on it. And I think they date back to the thirties and forties, perhaps. The separation between the buildings was such that there was no, you couldn't put a property line between them because of building setback lines. There was, there was a problem in the distance between that. And so we looked at open space development, and even with that, we still needed to get a variance from the ZBA to decrease the forty foot buffer to thirty-five. But that basically also increased the sideline from what it was is twenty-five up to thirty-five. So basically gaining ten foot on that. And it's only on the one lot to the south. Nothing's going to change on the lots one and two. Lot three is the only one that can be developed. And there is quite a bit of wetlands in the back of that. Part of that's going to be put into a conservation easement as well as the open space area that's needed in order to make this an open space development. So basically, we're ending up taking two buildings off of one lot and giving them their own lot and creating one additional building lot.
Thank you. Any questions at this time?
One from here. As I recall, the Conservation Commission has not had an opportunity to weigh in on this proposal. And I wonder if we shouldn't wait for that.
We tried. You know, we were all sitting around our screens for a meeting. They are having issues getting quarums lately, especially with the virtual meetings. I don't know if that will change if this is put off.
We are. You might have to wait a year for them to get together.
Can, can we make approval contingent on Conservation Commission approval?
Um, it might be problematic because if they recommend against it after this commission has approved it, it might be the strange sort of limbo for the applicant. In general, it, just speaking as someone who often attends their meetings, it seems like this is something they would be happy with. I mean, their main task is to advise this commission about recommending open space set aside versus the fee in lieu of open space. And this is a subdivision with a lot of open space that's going to be donated. You know, about sixty-eight percent of the property will be either set aside as open space or as a conservation easement on one of the lots. The Conservation Commission has targeted the Aguila Brook area in the past as a priority for conservation. So I don't think it's something that they would really have a problem with.
And it has access.
It does in the form of an easement.
Yeah.
This is probably just the second open space development application we've had since we've had these regulations in two thousand and six. The open space development regulations, they basically give a property owner extra flexibility when it comes to the bulk requirements and even the public infrastructure standards if someone is building a road, in exchange for setting aside at least fifty percent of the property as open space. So that's what they've done here is, you know, set aside a big chunk of the property as open space.
So this is Ben. How many acres, Mr. Marine, will this be in open space? Roughly. I'm not putting math wrong. Sixty-eight percent of thirteen acres is.
Okay, yeah. Sorry, I did, the total area of the open space is going to be six point nine four. That's the conservation easement and open space area.
Great. Thank you very much.
And this is Lynn. Where is the public access to the open space? I'm looking at the picture in the proposed layout. If you could access it via South Aguila Road, is that how you're going to access it?
There is an access to the north of lot number three that goes along property line within the forty foot buffer area for the open space development subdivision.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions at this time? Anyone else like to speak in favor of this application? Is anyone opposed to this application? Any general comments on this application?
This is Colleen.
If anybody's.
Colleen, Colleen, Colleen's on the phone.
It hasn't been determined who is going to control that open space, has it?
I think that's one of the things the Conservation Commission was looking into. There is a couple of things that can be done to that. We can find out if somebody would like to have it donated to their holdings, or if it would be an open space area that would be held by the owners of the three lots. But there's definitely going to be a pathway cut up and through there. It's an awful lot of wetland back there as well. It's not going to be the easiest thing to access the, 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 but, you know, the owners of the property were quite pleased to be able to put a bunch of open space back there anyways. This is something that they, they felt this would be a good thing to have happen. They don't utilize that property at this point in time very much anyway.
And the ownership of the open space has to, has to be figured out before the plans are recorded. Because when the plans are recorded, they have to deed the open space to whoever ends up with it. So it's not an issue that can just be undecided for years.
Question. I, I could see a problem with the homeowners owning and maybe at some time denying access. I think it would be much better for some land trust to control it.
We have two problems with this, with this property. We don't have the Conservation Commission, and we don't have a legal owner to rely on here. So why would we, why would we not defer this until we get those things addressed?
Well, we can continue this public hearing. Keith, how many days we have on this?
We have till October sixth. I mean, some words of caution are, the Conservation Commission really hasn't met since March or February. So I don't know if they'll be successful getting together. And frankly, we do have the, some big hearings coming up also.
I, I think if we could find out who's going to own the open space is what the question of the day is. And if it was, that was the, I think that's our main question at this time. Anyone else? Any questions on it?
So let's continue it until, until, as long as we can, until we get an answer on the.
Let's try to continue it the next meeting. I think we should be able to get an answer on open space between now and then, I hope.
It's, in my experience in dealing with these applications, it often takes a long time to find that answer because property owners have to sometimes negotiate with these land trusts.
Well, I mean, I think it should be said that it's going to be owned by a land trust, not by the property owner. I think that's what we wanted to see, a third party. And I don't see a.
Are there a back question for the applicant? Are there any current plans to build?
That's not, to my knowledge, and again, the only lot that they could build on is that number three lot. So I don't know if they have plans to build immediately. I cannot answer that honestly.
Okay, then, then I would, I would opt for referring this until we have the ownership question sorted out. I mean, there's no, there's no reason why we have to approve or disapprove anything at this stage, and there's no pressure to do it. So let's, let's not rush into this without answering the ownership question.
Do I hear a motion to continue this hearing?
So moved.
Second?
This is Ben. Is that motion?
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Mr. Chairman, commission members, thank you very much for your time this evening, and we'll give an answer for you as soon as we possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving right along, this is part two of our public hearing. PZ two zero one five R A, Town of Stonington, PZC, zoning regulation amendment to modify various sections of the regulations to require a special use permit for construction of retaining walls over seven feet tall within building setbacks.
Keith, you're on. Keith, you're on.
All right, so this is a zoning regulation amendment that the commission has put in, which would change the language of the zoning regulations to require a special use permit when someone builds a retaining wall of over seven feet tall within building setbacks. We've talked about this issue before in some other applications because the way the department has looked at this over the past few years about the issue of retaining walls and setbacks is that if a retaining wall is over three feet tall, it's not allowed in the building setbacks. The reason we came to that conclusion is because the definitions of structure and required yard and zoning say that only ornamental retaining walls are exempt from building setbacks. Three feet tall is when you need a building permit from the building official. So that seemed like the cutoff. Over the one of the past few meetings, the commission upheld that basic interpretation, but did allow some retaining walls that exceeded that under specific circumstances. So the bottom line is that the status quo in the regulations is another thing that's just very unclear. You know, nothing really says that. It's sort of our interpretation. That's very arguable. And there have been negative impacts to that interpretation too because there are lots of zones with very wide and deep setbacks. And retaining walls are often a necessary thing to develop a site. Three feet is also very low. It's sort of beyond is below what would disturb most people. So you know, the reason we came up with the regulation we did is because a special use permit would allow for public input with a public hearing. It would give the commission some more discretion to address some of the negative impacts. But it wouldn't completely prohibit these sort of retaining walls and building setbacks. The way that the regulation is structured is it calls retaining walls of seven feet or more in height, major retaining walls. And there's a new section in the zoning regulations that talks about that and has some standard general conditions or review criteria for what the commission should look for. Things like, you know, lack of drainage problems, aesthetic issues, public safety, visibility for motorists around corners and driveways in issues like that. It also says that if a retaining wall is over three feet, you need a zoning permit anywhere, but over seven feet in height within the building setback only, you'd need a special special use permit. This regulation does not deal with all the specific details about how to build a retaining wall and all the safety issues because those are all covered by the building code. And that's what the building official looks at when he when he reviews any retaining wall of over three feet tall. So all the specifics about how it's built and the fall protection, when you need a fence on top, those things are covered by the by the building code. We sent this out for comments from other people. The town engineer got back to us and you know, commented that it might make sense to have this match the building code as far as the definition some more. And recommended that we might want to change the measurement of height instead of just being from the basically the ground to the wall to being from the bottom of the wall to the top of the wall, even if the bottom of the wall is underground. So you're literally measuring the wall even if it's not visible. So that might be that could be something that makes sense there. So in some cases, if the wall itself is seven feet, you might only see five feet of it. But it would still need a special use permit. The zoning official said that some consideration should be given to visibility for any of us trying to pull out into a public right of way, even from a driveway, which I think the regulation covers here. So that's the basic idea behind it. You know, trying to sort of balance the different issues and not have it be as strict as just anything over three feet is not allowed in the building setback. Oh, and the reason we chose seven feet is because that's the height that a fence requires a building permit. That's the only reason why we chose seven feet. It doesn't have to be that. If the commission wants it shorter or taller, that's fine. But keep in mind, if we do tweak the definition to be from the top of the wall to the bottom of the actual wall, that seven feet might mean you see less than seven feet.
Okay. Let a question for you, Keith. Keith, if so, that means a wall under three feet in height can be built anywhere, anytime without permission. A wall three feet or greater needs a building permit, no matter where it is on the property, correct?
Right.
And a building seven feet tall or taller needs a special use permit if it's in the setback.
That's right. And it's worded to it's worded such that there has to be a part that's seven feet tall in the building setback to require the special use permit. So if you have a wall that's seven feet tall, it's not in the building setback and part extends into the setback, there's going to be part that's seven feet tall in the building setback to require the special use permit.
Okay.
Question, Mr. Chairman? This is Chuck.
Yes, Chuck.
Question of Keith. Keith, I I think that, you know, considering portions of the wall that are below grade and not visible make is is difficult to put into the regulations just based on, you know, being the veteran of many retaining wall designs. I I think it, you know, regardless of what heights we ultimately arrive at, I think what makes a difference is what's visible. So the exposed face of the wall, I think, is what should be should be what you're measuring, not necessarily what's below grade as a cantilevered footing or or something else which which, you know, I don't think should come into play in measuring height. I think it should be exposed face.
Yeah, and you know, the town engineer and I sort of went back and forth discussing it. And there's benefits to both sides of it. But I think ultimately zoning is more concerned with what you're talking about with what you see versus what's under the ground. And it's also just easier to to measure.
This is Lynn. Let me ask you a question about that Chuck and Keith. I was thinking along the same line, but the definition of exposed face. So if we take as an example the retaining wall that we just approved a couple of meetings ago out of the YMCA in in Mississauga. You know, you had you had the entire office of the wall that was facing the parking lot versus the part of the wall that was facing outward towards the road. So can you just as an example as to whether the exposed face in that type of.
But I I'll take a shot at that, Keith, if you want. I think the exposed faces, there's always one side of a retaining wall that that the benefit, the beneficiary is is the person on the that usually the non-retained side. So, you know, it's there's a retained side and a non-retained side. The exposed face is is on the non-retained side of the wall.
Okay, thank you very much. So in that instance, in the in the the YMCA, you know, building, I know it's not the YMCA, but the building next to the YMCA there, the wall facing the parking lot was like 12 feet, was it? You know, way over seven feet. And the what we would define the facing wall of the street was less than seven feet, correct?
So going to this regulation, that the wall would now require a special use permit. And it was measured from the surface of the parking lot to the top of the wall. Right?
Correct. Okay. And in a lot of cases, these retaining walls are already before you as part of some larger special use permit like this anyway. But this regulation, you know, does take them before you when that wouldn't be the case, just for some extra oversight.
But this is good. I agree with Chuck in that it has to be what's exposed because otherwise it's the footing part of the measurement that's underground. What's the wall, the footing of the where does the wall begin in the footing end type of thing?
Yeah, it could it could be difficult to measure. We'd have to probably better define exactly what the bottom is if we do that.
Footing ends at the surface of the wall where the wall becomes exposed.
Well, it's a vertical surface.
Any other questions at this time? Carlene? I think Carlene has something to say on this. She wanted to call in on it. Carlene, are you there?
She's on my screen. I I see her.
She's trying to get lit up.
Yeah, I see her actually.
So Carlene, if you're having if you're having a hard time speaking, there's also a chat function. So if you put your cursor towards the bottom of the screen, there's like the little cartoon cartoon bubble thing. That's a chat function. So you can type in there a question that everyone will see.
He's not on my screen.
I see her as having dialed in, but there's no image.
No, she doesn't have a image. She was going to call.
She has headphones and a phone, both for Carlene.
And I see her mute button button coming off and on on the phone also.
Yeah. Has she submitted anything in writing?
Uh, no.
Unusual.
I just put something in the chat to see if you maybe see that.
Good for you.
Yeah, we see it.
No.
Oh, we're here, yeah.
All right, you can hear me now?
Yes. It's very echoey, but yes.
All right. My concern was that it should be lower than seven feet, especially if it's a just a wall to keep your privacy rather than a retaining wall. I think the picture that was in the planner's report showed something similar to that. And and as a neighbor, I wouldn't want someone to build a seven-foot wall between our properties, and I have to look at it. At least there would be an opportunity with a public hearing for me to express my concerns to the commission. So to me, anything over, you know, five feet is is as tall as I am. And I wish I could stand in front of you so you could see it. And and comparing it to a fence, which is one dimension in height only, when you have a wall which has width to it, it becomes massive. And so this is, you know, you're talking retaining walls versus just regular walls. Anyway, I I really feel that seven feet should be reduced. So it's up for you to to decide.
Thank you, Carlene.
Welcome.
Is there any other what's the commission feel on this one?
Um, if we can just check if there's anybody else out there.
Does anyone else run like to speak on this application? Either way, for or against, any any general comments? You have none or go back?
Yeah, and this the seven feet could be lowered to something if the commission, you know, thinks it should be six or five or something else. The required votes once you complete the hearing is a decision on the application's conformance with the P O C D and the conformance with the comprehensive plan, which is sort of the combination of the zoning map and regulations. And just a decision on the regulation amendment itself. If it is approved, the effective date would be September 20th. But yeah, I think if we're just going to go with looking at the wall and not what's underground, then we don't have to tweak the language talking about how you measure the height.
Mr. Chairman, this is Chuck. I I would suggest if it's exposed face that there's some substance to, you know, the the comment that seven feet would be a very tall wall and that we could lower if it's exposed face that that five feet is probably a more reasonable standard to allow without a special permit. But that would that opinion is based on the fact that it is measured from the ground to the top of the wall, not from the bottom of the footing.
Exposed face only for retaining wall.
Correct.
Is it is it?
Hold on. I'd like to close the public hearing now, and then we can go on to the discussion. Is that all right?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now let's go on.
Okay, question, is it is it any is it a real burden to say if we were to say that walls over three feet exposed face require in setback require a special use permit? Now there's how we require. Now there's, now we require a variance for, but why not just, why pick a number to say if you get over the point where, where they can be approved as a, you know, as a routine matter, then let's get a special use permit? Is that a problem?
Mr. Chairman, can I still speak in regular session or?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
I, I, it just seems to me that three feet is, is, you know, puts us right back where we started. I, I, you know, to me, the lowest that we should consider would be like four, four feet, but, but I, I, and I, and I agree with what Fred is saying, that we should pick something and it, it should be something that, that is reasonable. And, and to me, that lowest reasonable number, if it's exposed face, is, is four feet. Or else you're going to be looking at special permits for retaining walls. As lot, as land becomes more scarce and scarce, you're going to be looking at retaining walls with every single lot that comes in here. And, you know, to me, four feet is, is reasonable. And if it's exposed face and, and that we should allow that without, without the, the extra administrative requirement of a special use permit.
This is Ben. I said, I well put, Chuck. Keith, how much does a special use permit cost to the general applicant?
About 500.
Yeah, that's a stiff.
And the time it takes, the time it takes.
Yeah.
As I see.
Colleen agrees. Five foot's pretty good.
I, I would support either four or five, even though I can't vote on this. I, I, I would support four or five as being, as being reasonable. And I think, I think the comment that Colleen made is, is a reasonable comment that the seven feet, if it's exposed face is too high. And I understand where, where professionals who advise us got that from. They were considering also the additional footing. If it's exposed face, I think either four or five is a reasonable requirement.
This is, I think Colleen was saying she was five feet. I don't think she was saying that five feet was the height.
No, no, she was, what she said, what she said was she was five feet and she thinks that seven feet is too tall and that seven feet should require a special, you know.
She said, she said five feet was all right.
She did say five feet.
It's a new town measurement. It's one Carleen height.
I, I would, I would agree with a four foot. I, 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 I always like to do things incrementally and I would agree with a four foot height limitation. And I think that seems reasonable.
In the setback.
Yeah.
No, no, I'm sorry. I had something come out of the printer. No, I, you know, either four or five. And I, I don't, I don't disagree with either of those as, as being, as being reasonable and unobtrusive. And you should not force, you should not force an advocate to go for a special use permit, which most people are so unfamiliar with, they also have to get an attorney to represent them. You know, it, it, it can be done, it can be done tastefully. It still gets reviewed. It still has to have an engineer's stamp on it. It, it's, it's subject to all kinds of additional requirements. You're just not telling the person they have to, they have to, you know, it's an engineered wall. They just don't have to get a special use permit for it, which I think is, is an extraordinary requirement for, for, you know, even a five foot wall. But, but I don't think four is unreasonable. And I think Lynn makes some good points.
Shall we meet in between and go four foot six?
Even better. I agree.
Oh.
No.
No, Ben.
What do you feel on it?
Four feet.
Gardner? Gardner, you have any opinion?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I thought, I get too excited about this one way or the other, you know, four feet, five feet, whatever, whatever floats everybody's boat is fine with me.
Fred?
I, I could do, five feet's fine. I'm taller than that, so I can see over it.
Yeah.
You know, one issue with going with four is that there's only a one foot difference between the two categories of walls now, where three feet, you need a zoning permit. Just one foot more in the setbacks, you need a whole special use permit. So I don't even know if, you know, if the commission wants to go with four, that's fine. I don't know if it should mean sort of reviewing this regulation again to see if that makes sense or to see if everything should just be four, just to see if there's a better way to get there, is what I'm trying to say. Because the regulation was sort of written with these two levels of just three feet and seven feet. And now there's just, there's barely any difference between the two.
So do you want to, you want to put this off and, and think about it some?
Yeah, if three feet is the, excuse me, if four feet is the going consensus of the, of the commission, I think we probably should.
Okay, works for me.
Well, do you want to vote? How many people want, how many?
Do you, you want to open the, reopen the public hearing and continue it?
Ben, so moved, Mr.
Second.
Public hearing is reopened.
But continue to the next meeting?
Yeah, to the next meeting. Does anyone agree on that?
Keith will come back to us with a height? What was your height?
Not like five. I, I don't see, I agree with, five feet's fine. I agree with Fred. I can see over it.
I like five feet.
What?
Okay, but I can't. So I have to tell you, I'm, I'm five two.
Oh, you can see over it.
That, no, no, I can't see over. So I'm just saying, you know, I think a retaining wall is the kind of thing that, you know, you should be able to see over it. And I, I just, you know, I'm, if you're, if you're five two, you can't easily see over a wall that's five foot. I don't know. It's my personal.
If you step back, you can't.
Well, lots of times you're not stepping back, right? I mean, that's, but anyway, I just think I agree with that. In, in thinking this through very carefully.
Yeah, hold on. Right, just, I just want to take a consensus. Ben, you go with five foot, correct?
Yes, sir.
Fred?
Yep.
Gardner, you don't care, do you?
I really, I really don't care. Five feet, four feet, whatever, whatever works.
I feel five feet. I feel five feet. I don't want seven feet. I think five foot's a good compromise. So let us continue it to the next meeting. And we'll go from there.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to continue the public hearing?
Make a motion to continue the hearing till next time.
Second motion.
Hold on, in favor?
Aye.
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 Vote.
Lynn, Lynn, I don't think we heard you.
I, I said aye, sorry.
And that's it, I think, tonight. Nothing else on the agenda, is there Keith?
Oh, no, that is it.
I think I'm going to close the special hearing.
Okay.
Hold on, in favor?
Aye.
No, continue the public hearing.
I said the special hearing, tonight's hearing.
Oh, it's tonight's reading.
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
There we go.
Next meeting Tuesday the fifteenth.
Okay.
Okay.
Now we got wind development then, public hearing.
Oh, boy.
So everyone, that's that big one in down in Park.
Thank you, Keith.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good night, everyone.
Good night. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.